Okay, we are back into open session. TJ Johnson is with us by phone now, so just so you're aware of that as well. Next, we have the track update. Mr. Pynchon.
Yes. So I just, I shared last time some numbers and basically said that in my mind, the track was dead and we're done. Mrs. Flynn is not so easily swayed. So she started talking about the company from Uniontown, Kansas, who put that rubber top on that lasted for 16 years. And Greta found the file from that whole project and I called him. And actually, it may not be as, this subject may not be as dead as I thought it was. Currently, he could peel that rubber off, patch the asphalt, and do the exact same thing that was done in the past, and it would be $150,000 or less. This particular guy has been doing this for 30 years. He developed and patented a product that's an underlayment to rubber tracks. So if you've ever installed a laminate floor or seen them, a Pergo, that foam that you put down, he patented a product that goes down and then he puts rubber on top of it. So the difference between the two ideas is if he does what he did, then he will guarantee it will end up like it is in eight to 10 years. He guarantees it will crack because our base is faulty. Having the underlayment, he guarantees it will not crack and it will be waterproof. There's a catch. That process is about $450,000. So I haven't been in contact with Mr. Betts. He is very excited with the first option because if you look at our original bids of about $900,000, if we can get tracks that last eight to 10 years, we can put a new top on it for many, many decades until we've spent $900,000. So it is a Band-Aid kind of deal. However, it's a Band-Aid that saves us money in the long haul. So Mr. Betts is on the April agenda. He is actively pursuing some financial ideas and he'll be hopefully bringing something to the table April 12th and we can try to get on this guy's books. Summer is really busy for him. He is coming here in the next week or two on a business trip further west and he's going to stop and he's going to look and he's going to measure and he'll be able to give us a really solid number. And even if we have to wait until the fall, he said he's done many because everybody wants it done in the summer. He's done many of them in the fall. He promises he won't disrupt football or anything else as long as the coaches are willing to work with him. So I am cautiously optimistic and I thank Mrs. Flynn for being persistent and continuing to look for ideas. So that's exciting news.
So you, you said that the layer, the piece, the layer between the base and the rubber top, that's where the $400,000 comes in?
Yes.
Is that extra or is that just total?
That's peeling off the rubber, putting down his patented base, and then putting the rubber track on top of it.
But we're looking at just peeling off, facing the cracked asphalt and putting this stuff, not putting this stuff on?
That's the, that's the least expensive, most viable option.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, a Chevy or a Cadillac.
We're gonna have to own the Chevy.
I think so.
Yeah.
To the quick question, how's it backing it up? I know you stated that it lasted 10, 15 years in the past instead of the last 10 years. What if he is warrantying the profit knowing that the substrate is up there and we have asphalt on top of it, which is extra dirt?
Right. But there is no warranty and no guarantee other than he promises and guarantees that that rubber will crack as it ages because of the asphalt.
But is this warranty to asphalt of 15 years more prominent now than it has been in the past?
Hopefully, he can evaluate that when he comes and we can have that kind of a discussion. I know that the, the patching material, a lot of technology has changed in 16 years and I just need to have him here to look at it so we can get a good, honest opinion.
Okay. Any other discussion? David?
I have a comment. This is real good news for here for school and our community. I had learned here this last week, a couple things on some area tracks that there's a district here in Kansas, Southeast of Sling, who they had closed their track down to track meets just like we have for a couple of years before the, before a plan came together. And also I learned of two schools, Southeast of Sling, that they just, they had pulled out their track and put limestone millings down and they can still operate as a walking track, as a practice track and everything, they just don't have track meets. And so, you know, we're not totally out of water if we don't get something done. Like I said, I hope, hope something comes together on this, things that are making present here this evening. But also at the same time, renting a track, I don't believe costs all that much compared to a major rebuild or a brand new kind of thing. So I think we have lots of options out there. We need to just come be zoned in on the target that each of us want.
And I would say this, one of the things that impressed me about the community where I was visiting, we have a beautiful facility there. The stadium is awesome. We have some of the best brass on the football field that I've seen in a long time. We have a wonderful sidewalk with the lamps and the rock posts. That is a, that's a gym. And if we can figure out the track, then that will be an incredible facility.
So he should have a better number for us by April, April 8th? Okay, that's really good, that's promising.
Great. Any other discussion? That's really good news.
That's much better.
That is good news.
And Mr. Betts is really excited because he, that's an achievable target. 900 grand?
Yeah.
That's rough, but it's an achievable target.
When you're, David said, so that was pretty much a, yeah, out of the water, you know, but now, I mean, there's other options, so, yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else? No? Okay, all right. Next, we have the mask mandate and the facility use. Okay, we're just gonna go ahead and discuss it this evening instead of having another board meeting next week. Okay, Mr. Pynchon, what did you find out?
Well, I, I just tell you a reason why we had to push that forward. My wife is having surgery next Wednesday and I just don't know if I can get back here in time for a board meeting. So I talked to Patty and we thought, let's just put it on there and talk about it. I talked to Ladonna on the phone. I don't have an email this time from her. We, we have, I think she said they've tested like 30 tests in the last week or two. We don't have a significant issue as of right now. I did send a survey out to the staff to ask what they thought. And the questions, let's see. So the questions are, certified classified, do you support making masks optional for students? And what building do you spend the majority of your time? So if we kind of go backwards, we got a good 50/50 mix. We got 48 responses, half from the elementary school and half from junior, senior high. We had 61.2% certified response, 38.8. This is the magic question right there. Do you support removing the mask mandate and making masks optional for students and staff? And it is 75.5% in favor of that, 24.5 opposed to that. I have expressed my opinion as your superintendent of recommendations. We are coming up on state assessments. We have prom coming up and we have graduation coming up. Ladonna understands the desire and understands that we don't have issues right now. But if we do have issues, quarantines will go back into effect. And we had kids miss graduation last year even in July because of quarantine. So I, I just urge you to consider and to ponder the long-term effect on this. My personal opinion doesn't matter, but I will tell you, maybe some of the reason we are where we are is because of what we have done. I don't have any data that supports that. It's simply an opinion. But I wanted to share these two pieces of information with you. Not only is it a mask issue, it's also do we open our facilities back up? We have people requesting to use our facilities again. And I don't have solid data to say that, I know, but that's something that, you know, we just need to figure out.
Wouldn't the decision to have choice of mask, remove mask, and opening our facilities
up be two different decisions?
I think so, yes.
And the option was, I, I did get an email from a staff member that said, we left out the option of teachers having the ability to have a mandate in their classroom or not. And I will say this, my only concern in a multiple student family is if you have two or three kids and one kid has to wear a mask all day and the other two or three don't, that's gonna cause some, that's just a disparity thing in my mind. So, but it was brought up that that is an option that you could consider and I just wanted to make sure that you understood that is an option, teacher-directed for their own classrooms.
Well, speaking from experience, having two kiddos last year that didn't get to go to their prom, didn't get to do their senior year of track, some of the kids, of course, didn't get their baseball, softball, and then, of course, graduation. It's tough. Yes, it made them stronger, I understand that, but it is, it's tough on those because they don't get a chance to come back to do prom. They don't get a chance to come back and do their senior year, their track year and things like that. So, you know, like I said, just coming back from spring break, you know, who knows what's going around with that. But that's, I'm just speaking from a personal experience, so it's tough on the kids, it really is, so.
I can agree with you, you had the correct shot to the statement you made there. I think what the reason why we are at, where we're at is due to the fact that we can out follow the mask mandate and even on the county. I think personally, I think the kids might not mind this much. They're getting used to it, to see it in the community. We've been wearing it every day for so long and we truly don't have much left of a school year that personally, I think, just waiting till after this school year is over.
My hate means, like, what would that be, waiting along in graduation things, though? I mean, you're, you're saying the kids would have to wear masks at prom and graduation?
If, if it remained in effect, yes. Currently, the prom that's scheduled has masks in place. But if, if this were lifted, then they wouldn't be in place.
It would be their choice.
It would be an option, it would be a personal choice.
I think we've all gone all around. Is there a treatment for COVID? If you're sick with COVID, can you go in and get a treatment? Not per se. People know that if you're gonna go get tested, there's a chance you're gonna get quarantined. If, if you're sick, stay home. If you're not sick, do it. If you're a senior, be careful. We're all smart enough to, to take the risk into our, to be able to do it. It's, I don't know, this whole, everybody needs to do this for this 25% or whatever, you know, with, it's America. We should all have our personal freedoms to do what we want. If you wanna wear a mask and, if you wear a mask to school every day and you don't have to be quarantined because you have your mask on, then let the seniors wear a mask every day if they're worried about being quarantined and they won't be, right? Because that's what I understand. It's their option. So I, I would make a motion that we go back to optional immediately.
I'd second.
And I, I hear what you're saying, John, as far as if you wanna wear a mask, it's optional, it's up to you, you're a mask. The problem with the COVID-19, it's all the way to comfort, to be a double masking, meaning that the person also wears a mask or you have to wear an N95 mask, which nobody is wearing in our school system. So that is the concern I have about it due to the fact that, yes, there is an option, yes, they have freedom of rights, but we have to consider the other ones like the teachers, for example, that might have health issues, but what if I have to continue with a, with a mask? I mean, we're talking, what, six, eight weeks, we're done. And we've gone the full school year, so that's just my personal opinion.
But our teachers have all had options to get the COVID-19 vaccine. If the vaccine's worth anything, then it should be taken care of.
But that isn't guaranteed, not, not spreading it, though?
Well, I understand that, it doesn't guarantee not spreading it, but if you're a teacher and you're concerned about your health, hopefully you got the vaccine and you shouldn't contract the virus.
Well, if you're a vaccine, not 100% bulletproof. There are some, about 70% of it.
We gotta remember this is America, can't have a degree, can't have a degree, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion by John, seconded by David, that USC 298, more of education move the mask to recommend it, but not required, effective immediately.
So what you said?
Any other, is that what you said?
Yeah, that's basically optional, right?
It's optional?
Yeah.
But, but recommended?
Optional, but recommended?
I would just say optional.
Just optional, okay.
We've all listened to the, 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 the.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna read me this, just to make sure we're, okay, so motion by John, seconded by David, USC 298, more of education, approve moving mat to masks as optional, but not required, though?
Yes.
For USC 298, effective immediately.
Yes. And the only thing I would add, and I understand tornado drills and stuff at the grade school where kids have to be in real close contact, if, I think at the beginning of the year, we had one of those and all the kids were asked to bring a mask to school for that particular drill. And so if that is something that is outside of what we do here and allows principals to do that, that is fine. I understand super close quarters and there's a mass gathering that it may be required, but that was, that was definitely the beginning of the year because I remember all the kids were asked to bring their mask for a tornado drill. So I don't know if that was outside of what we did here or not, but.
Prom would be a mass gathering technically, right?
Is that what it would be?
I mean, I don't, but prom, I mean, the kids are in pretty close proximity and there's a lot of stuff.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it off.
I don't, I mean, I just.
Yes, I understand, thank you.
That's, that would be a mass gathering, that's a great idea.
I'll let tomorrow start.
I see the same thing, yes.
So optional, but not required.
Okay. Effective immediately, is the motion on the table? Any further discussions?
I just wanna make the same statement again, that I think it's important, well, this is how spirit provides, like, an alma mater, I mean, they're the ones that you have the knowledge, they have all the information, our decisions in the community, et cetera. So I'm just gonna make that like.
Okay. Thank you, TJ. Yeah, we have two, three. Okay, so all in favor? Three, four? All opposed?
Aye.
I don't know, I'm, I'm half on half, so there's that problem, but I guess I'm with you.
So we're three? So four and three?
Yep.
Okay, so motion carried. Okay, so now, moving on to facilities use, opening or not? Yes, I'm thinking, oh, sorry.
Well, just for clarification, that would include the weight room, the card, the people that have the card, and organizations, individual and organizational use.
So this would be, this would be turning on the community access, so people could go up there and, yes, go out, call, like, Wade's Walk?
I think our first responsibility is get some students.
Did you discover a way to sanitize at the right time of day to make it work? Christie would kind of maybe look into that, because I didn't own a car.
This would be my question, because I don't wanna have somebody have to come in Sunday and, 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 every night, at nine or 10 o'clock when people are done. I think that is, but I think that's asking too much of our staff.
Our employees need jobs for students.
Yes, yes.
Could there be, I don't know, just an idea, like, if the rec needs to use it for something, if they were willing to clean up after themselves and sanitize, is that an option or?
Well, they would, those, those big areas would take the use of those 360 fog machines. It just wouldn't be something that.
Well, could, could we open it to organizations and not community access because then, then it would be a plan even, it would be a scheduled.
And I don't really trust that they have anything that's gonna be indoors at any time soon, but.
Like, like the dance competition, that's.
And I would draw the distinction between the weight room where everybody's touching everything and the gym where somebody, you gotta bring your own basketball and, you know what I'm saying? I would, I would see a difference between that, sweating, laying on benches, touching every weight bar and things, but in my mind, I would see a difference as opposed to having the dance recital.
If they brought their own basketball, they would basically just be in there shooting and, yeah.
Or they're just in the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Or they can, they can, they can go in the locker rooms too because they're not off limits.
That's true. So maybe that's not as just as I thought.
Everything they'll be at, is what I was thinking.
There's not a way to just say specifically the use of the gym, but is the only thing they could use?
I don't know.
You can't get directly in, through the gym, yeah.
Without providing a restroom facility, which is the locker room.
Gym versus, yeah.
Well, I was thinking maybe it's just not something to just the gym, but if they have to have access to the changing rooms and things, I'm not really okay with that. I know a lot of the public is very, very upset because we own that school, our taxes pay for it, but you prevent us from coming into that building and that, you shouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
But they need, it wasn't until just years, I mean, how many years ago that we opened it up to public access, they could go in whenever they wanted to, so I think it's.
Our first job is to be shoes.
Like that, I think, I agree with David, I think our first priority needs to be our kids and our staff. But, because, yeah, we did not used to have our facilities opened up that they could go in or shoot hoops or whatever.
I would like to readdress this issue after school's up.
Okay.
Well, I, I think we should allow organizations, if they plan like, like a Saturday or some planned event, I think that would be okay. I don't think we should have community. I'm okay with the not community access, but I would like to see this allowed.
Like if they want to have an event, it's gonna be on April 4th so we can schedule, we're gonna sanitize it, okay?
So if it was a scheduled event, like a dance recital or if a group wanted to use it for something, if the rec wanted to schedule a, some sort of tournament in the gym or something, then they could attempt to coordinate.
We'd coordinate how we're gonna clean.
I think it's just gonna be a nightmare, honestly.
May I add a piece to this discussion?
Yes.
So one thing to think about for us, I know the dance recital's been mentioned and we always enjoy having that dance recital because I know it's a vital part of the community. If you think about the stage, one crucial piece to this is the stage is still used as a lunchroom. Every single day, it is packed full of desks with refrigerator now, a milk crate, et cetera. And so if we were to open that up, that's gonna require us to do quite a bit of maneuvering. Having a dance recital as soon as school gets out would be something definitely we could consider because we would have the time to move all of that, but the way it's used right now, it is used as a lunchroom.
Well, it typically is the Saturday after school's out.
Okay. And that would be something that we could move all of that and, and go from there. So I just wanted to put that piece in there, or perhaps in the high school.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it couldn't be no stage.
Yes, the stage is.
But we could just say, you know, because they're used, that that's not a bill.
I can't hear my comments. That's what's bothering me, that you're saying, just pointing it out.
Sorry, I, I was just saying, you know, her stage is not accessible and it could just be if somebody wanted to use one of the buildings. We said you can't use the grade school stage right now because it's been used for other things.
So is the thing, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah. There's just, I totally understand having to move everything and that's not feasible and like if you have to set up something, but if somebody asks what they can use, we can always say, okay, the high school gym's available. I don't know if the high school commons area would be available, that would, I would assume so because it can be cleaned on a non basis and possibly the whole gymnasium at the grade school, but the stage is often used, so. Does that need to be a motion that we could allow use of high school gym, grade school gym minus the stage and the commons area?
I might just sample the box.
For scheduled events?
And fresh shoes and locker rooms.
With a two week, with a two week notice?
And you're gonna get your restroom and your locker rooms and things like that as well?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's why if we have the notice and everybody, do we usually get rental payments for renting it? I thought with soil conservation, we always had to pay.
We had to pay, but I don't know, rent might be, I mean, I think it's in our agreement as part of them so they don't have to, they can use it.
So if it's in agreement, then we've already had it in agreement, so.
I'm sorry, and I, and I, I've been in and out a little bit here, but I just wanted to hear from an administrative employee view, and knowing the extra labor, everything with the cleanup, if that might occur with this, with this infection, et cetera. What is our facility leaders, administrators' opinion related to this? Is this something they support or would they like to see this hold off until this school year is over?
Well, I cannot speak for Christie, but I can speak for my building. So I only have one full-time custodian and she has played an enormous part in keeping us open this year. She has so many duties that we've added on to her due to COVID that it, it never ends. And so I've actually taken off some of her duties in order to get her out of the door so we don't go into overtime because that has been a consideration fiscally. We do wanna save money for the district. So if we were then to add on additional cleaning duties, it's only gonna compound a problem that we have. So I would prefer if we could open up as soon as school gets out. In consideration for our custodians who are doing probably 15 extra steps than what they have did in the past.
Yeah, I think it's important that all these are facility leaders that are in their hands are, you have to have been able to work with all this discipline, it's our work, it's our labor because they're all the world. And I'm just afraid that opening it up is gonna create extraditional work duties for our staff that already have gone way beyond in helping us out and keeping us open for as long as we have, so.
I would concur with TJ.
What's that?
Mrs. Schmidt concurred with your comment.
Okay.
So is, no, Mrs. Walter is not. So I guess if it's the dance thing, I mean, one of, I mean, it's actually, so if you just make it as soon as school is out, then it's open and that we cover that.
Or we cover that.
Yeah. And then our kids are out and then our, our janitors would have time to play the next day or whatever and not have to be there at 10 o'clock at night trying to do that or 5 o'clock. I don't know how long it takes to run it, so, so.
Does it have to be a motion if we decide not to do anything? And does it have to be a motion if we decide not to do anything?
Just leave it as is and we can make some.
As we're starting, we are, we are, but if that's the case, we don't want to be a motion.
Can we, can we table it to April and get Christie's opinion also at our April meeting? And then we'll make, because it's currently closed and if it stays closed for another two weeks, we'll get a couple more weeks down the road and see how things are.
Bring it back next month and then we can discuss it over.
I would agree with that, TJ.
So.
Okay, so, thank you. Everybody, you okay with that? Any other further discussion?
Do you have a motion or?
Did you have a motion? I missed it.
I don't think so. I was trying to formulate it, but I never did formulate it.
Okay, alright. I apologize because I missed it.
You don't have anything to?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you. Bring that back.
Bring that back.
Yeah, April, April. Okay, alright, moving on. Um, CARES Act purchase for scrubbers. That's your friend Charlie Grup again.
This is a purchase that exceeds $10,000 or $10,000. So even though it's CARES money, it's still an expenditure that I need your approval for. So what we're looking at here is two walk behind scrubber disinfecters. And I like what you see at Walmart or whatever, a big box store has the curved squeegee at the back end. So it dispenses liquid, it cleans, and then it sucks that liquid back up. Uh, because it is for disinfecting as well as cleaning, it falls under CARES Act allowable expense. These machines were brought out in demo for us and the reason for the upgrade is because we have 20-year-old machines. We currently have machines that you have to pre-mix your chemical with the water. So at the end of the day, if you haven't used everything, when you drain your tank, you're draining good chemical down. These are a post-mix, if you will, so there's a water tank and a chemical tank. And at the end of the day, you dump your water and you keep your chemical. These machines, one of them is a stand-on machine, which the elementary school preferred, and one of them is a walk behind machine that the high school preferred. The other thing that these machines can do is strip the wax off the floor with a special pad. Um, what I was looking at was not only the disinfection, the efficiency of a post-mix uh chemical, the chemicals aren't inexpensive, uh, but also the efficiencies of labor because I've watched custodians at the high school mop the uh lunchroom with a mop. And this machine will allow them to have a 20-inch pass every time, like a Zamboni ice machine in a hockey game. So I think it will speed things up, it will do a better job, it will keep clean chemicals and water on the floor. And I think in the summertime, it'll be a huge benefit in the refinishing of the floor. So I'm requesting that you approve these two bids totaling 14, 600 maybe, that's some change.
Is the extra due to amount of trade-in or due to walk behind versus?
Walk behind versus write-off. Um, one of the things that I have a lot of fun doing talking with vendors is you can see that there's a trade-in there of $200 per machine on old machines, but I like having fun with them and saying, okay, if I buy two machines, what kind of bulk discount do I get? So if I, if we buy two machines at one time, they take another $400 off.
You have $400 a machine?
Yeah, $400 off list plus $200 trade-in. And the $400 isn't reflected in that invoice price because they need to make sure that we buy the two machines.
So the actual purchase price would not be, is it probably be less than 200?
It would be $400 less than that. So 14,1.
Yeah, 14,181,133. 33, yes. 14,181,33.
I would ask that you just approve the purchase of these two machines. If I can get a better deal fine. If I need to get some chemicals with it, then we could just run that through as well.
So, so do we need not just see the 15 then? Or do we need to put this amount in?
Would you approve purchasing those scrubbers?
Through.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I should go back to the negotiating table saying the case of disinfectant.
Yeah, you might do it. Alright, so motion by Deb, second by David. USC 298 Department of Education authorized a future purchase of two floor scrubbers with the CARES Act money. Do you need that? No, I do. Okay, bye. Alright, so any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Seven oh one. Thank you. Alright, and now we need to go on to financial consideration.
Is it like a test? Do we have to work from the back to the front?
I think I'm gonna say now at this time I have to leave to go to help my mother's chest. I don't know.
I get tested.
Yeah, boy, I've been a 360 math problem.
I might need help if it's that many math problems.
Who did this to TJ? Can you be honest with TJ later?
Um, it can, it can be a packet for.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. They'll have the, the presentation and the packet for you.
Okay, I'm gonna take my mask off because I wanna make sure everybody can hear everything, especially anybody who's watching. I'm gonna make this even smaller.
We can't see you.
Perfect. Um, okay. Things are happening very quickly in the state legislature. They have two more weeks and they're doing a lot of what's called gut and go bills where they'll pull things out, they throw things in, they change numbers of bills. Um, so I have spent a lot of time this week reevaluating where we are financially. Um, but I do want to say this. I committed to you and I committed to this community to be transparent and hopefully we earned some trust with that at our transportation meetings that we had over the busing issue. And I promise that I will continue to do that. Some of the information I'm gonna share with you is hopeful. Some of the information I'm gonna share with you is not so hopeful. But it's not an emotional situation. It is numbers and it is data and it is what it is. So what I show you tonight is for your consideration moving forward. My goal as your superintendent and what you've entrusted me with is to manage this school district financially in all operations and I'm committed to doing that. Uh, quitting and failure are not words that are in my vocabulary very often. It doesn't matter how ugly the truth is, the truth is simply the truth. So I want to share that. I would also encourage to any patrons that are watching or to your board members, please come and see me if you have specific questions or concerns because I would be more than happy that all of our numbers are public. I would be very happy to have discussions. I would be very happy to have explanations. I would be very happy to have input because we're all in this together. Um, but as we move through this, what I want to share with you is the really good news. So I've spent time with uh Green Bush Financial people and we have been working on projections. And everything that I showed at the transportation meeting showed a decline in every account that we had. Every student enrollment number was a decline. If, and this is merely an estimate, understand that. We have until June 30 that we need to survive. If we don't have any major hiccups, these are the current projections for year end, which I'm pleased with. It, it changes the downward trend. These are our total operating funds. Last year, we ended with $29,000. This year, we're estimated to end with $101,000 in capital outlay. We're projected to be in better position than we were last year. Nothing makes me more excited than to see lines going up and not down. So when you look at these totals, we're looking at $71,000 over the last year end. And what that will do in our operating funds is give us the opportunity to transfer funds at the end of the year. And here's why this is so critical. We started this year with $0 in food service. We couldn't buy a carton of milk because we didn't have any money to transfer in there for food service at the end of the year. In special education, we started with $0 in that fund. Anything that you can transfer over at the end of the year gives you that cushion, number one, to get started in food service, number two, to get spend a little less painful. But we weren't able to do that. So what I need you to understand on these, these are savings. This isn't spendable revenue. This is recovery mode, if that makes sense. Capital outlay is our bricks and mortar. And I know we've talked about it a lot. Uh, we ended last year with $75,000 in capital outlay. You can't buy much of anything or repair much of anything with that sort of a balance. Uh, I shared at the transportation meeting, for an example of a neighboring district, Sylvan Grove had $549,000 in capital outlay. So that's not a bad number to have. You don't need $5 million in capital outlay, but you need enough money to prepare for the worst. And so that needs to stay and it needs to continue to build. This is an email that I shared with you earlier and I also shared with transportation. When I talk about funding reductions, I just want you to know, these are numbers and these are research numbers. It's not an opinion of mine. It's an opinion of the finance director of the state of Kansas because I sat down with him in Topeka and we worked through this thing. So when I say there's an expectation of a $72,000 reduction in state funding because of our student enrollment decline, I just want you to understand, that's not my made-up number. This is what we have to look at and we have to deal with. Um, we will go from a 330 student count to a 311 student count. We are off of our three-year high and they say it in a confusing manner, but what they say is you can use your current year enrollment or the previous year or the second previous year. I call it a three-year high because it makes more sense to me. Um, so we're gonna reestablish next year a budget based on our completed audit of student count, but our September 20 count is 311 students. That's a 19-student reduction off of our three-year high. That's with, added with the waiting, the at-risk waiting, um, free and reduced lunch waiting, and just because we're lucky, they are revamping the transportation formula and we can no longer use the old transportation formula because of our cycle. We are now under the new transportation formula, which you can see will cost the district about $15,000 in transportation waiting as well. That's where that 71,940 comes from. The good news was the upward swings. Now we're getting to some ugly facts, okay? Our declining enrollment will cost us $71,940. Right now, the Senate and the House are debating high-density act risk funding. We get 8.3 FTE, student FTEs, which means they say we have this need for act risk, so they'll allow us 8.3 more students' worth of funding. That's how they do waitings. How many FTEs? We have like 154 transportation FTEs. So when they add it together, we may get funding for 400 kids. We don't have them. It's that added student count for waitings, just so everybody understands. Right now, the Senate has already passed a bill that does away with at-risk funding this year and it won't be available next year. The House bill is currently saying, allow this funding for next year, but it will go away the following year. And they're in the middle of this deal where we have to wait and see. But what I want these numbers to reflect is this philosophy. We need to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And so these are just realities. The LOB reduction, sometimes it's a local option budget, also called supplemental general, um, it is 30% of our general fund. So once we get our state aid, then we calculate 30% of that and that's the taxes that get collected locally. So if our funding goes down $71,000, we lose 30% of that reduction as well. And that calculates out to be that 28,740. So the truth of the matter is currently, we could be looking at a $139,739 reduction in funding overall next year. That keeps me up at night. But it is what it is. And I, oh, you, you can turn your slides over. I just didn't want you reading ahead. I'm sorry. So you can take notes on your papers that I sent out. This is so important that I wanted you to have paper copies of these because as your constituents contact you, I want you to have this information so that you don't have to rely on your memory and you don't have to rely on your notes. This is critically important that everybody understands the truth of where we are. This didn't happen overnight. Um, however, it is where we are. All of those declining numbers occurred over five or six years. Nothing significant took place to save money. So as we continued to operate as normal, as student numbers went down, we continued to keep a high level of expense. So we are at where we are at and it just is what it is. I would say this to the board and to our patrons, I fully believe we should be expected to live within our means. I've had in my admin meeting today, I told my administrators, you can't go out and overbuy a house or overbuy a car and then go to your employer and say, jeez, I can't pay my bills. I need a raise. Well, we have a responsibility to live within our means as well as a school district. So that's why we're having to have these conversations. We have to make adjustments to be responsible and stewards of the tax monies that support us. We have to figure out strategies to live within our means. That. So we have a couple of options and before I go into these, neither of them are pleasant. But again, you deserve the truth. Our patrons deserve the truth. So I am sharing with you a couple of options that we have in order to recover funding. Salaries in a school district are typically 70 to 85% of the overall budget. So that is where significant reductions in spending take place. Uh, programs, it would take five programs to equal a salary. Programs are what keeps kids involved. It keeps them motivated. It builds school pride. It builds community pride. And I highly disagree with cutting programs. If anything, I think we need to increase programs and find other areas for disengaged students to become engaged and be a part of our school community. We can absorb, and, and this doesn't mean letting people go. This means figure out how to absorb attrition naturally. Uh, and we'll have a chat about that in a second. The other option is every school board has the authority to authorize local auction budget to 33%. And I have an analysis of that coming up that I'll share with you also. My job is to present, present you with everything I can find out. And if you remember Gary Seacrest meeting where he had a line of board role, this, this is a board role. Knowing where we're heading is a board role. Executing what you want me to do is my job. So I am, I am laying everything out there for your consideration. This isn't fear mongering. This is just sharing facts so the board can make a very informed decision on how we move forward and start living within our means. So here are some numbers of. So, here are some numbers of thresholds of classes. And I can tell you this, the first thing you could tell me is, we're not Salina, we're not Lawrence, we're a small rural community. And you're absolutely right. However, these districts have enough money, if they thought class sizes of twelve were the best thing, they can afford to build another school. These districts have millions of dollars in capital outlay and reserve funds. What I use these two districts for is simply this, if they weren't effective with these-sized classes, they would do something about it. Because these school districts have much better test scores than we do. So the reality that we must face is, why do we have small classes? And one idea is, because it is a cultural line set, not a data-driven decision. So I'm just throwing that out there. Mrs. Schmidt, today reached out to some other districts that are closer to us in equivalent in size, and I just want to share some of the things she found. Some of the school districts didn't get back with her. Bennington, two sections are per-grade level, as they are usually in the high twenties to thirties per-grade level. It's not uncommon in the past at Tesco Bennington, to have one section of students in a grade of nineteen to twenty-five students. Lakeside, they have no set threshold, they have classes one grade level that range from nine to nineteen students. Next year, the incoming kindergarten will be twenty-four, and they will have one teacher for that section. Thunder Ridge, lower class numbers in the last year, however, one classroom was twenty to twenty-five students. And then in some two-A schools, Hoysington, for example, K-1 is twenty-student max, but two through fifth grade caps at twenty-five. So when I say threshold, what I mean is, when you get to that level, in a Lawrence, for an example, that's when they start the discussion of whether they should bring, it's not automatic. They have a range of, say, twenty-four to thirty. At twenty-four, they start having the discussion, do they need a plan on expanding? So those are just some items of information that I want you to be aware of. So let's talk about mill levy, which goes into LOB. This is the mill levies since 2016, that I found on old-school budgets in the file cabinet, up to current. So it has ranged from fifty-one point seven mills to the low of last year of forty-seven point oh-three-six mills. And our current county assessed valuation is forty-two million three eighty-one three ninety-five. So one mill, the easiest way to always figure a mill, is just move the decimal point three places to the left, and there's your per-mill-dollar value. And I don't want to sound like I'm being silly and being, what do I want to say, condescending. I just want to make sure everybody that's listening has the same opportunity to understand this, because it'll make your head spin. And my head's been spinning for days. So one mill of taxation here, county-wide, raises forty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. To give you kind of a funny idea, you raise a mill in Johnson County, you might get five million dollars out of it. It's just based on valuation, you know? So with that in mind, I would like to take you through what exercising thirty-three percent looks like. There are three different districts that I know of that surround us, and I didn't put them in my notes, and I apologize. Smoky Hill has been at thirty-three percent for years. And in my soup meeting, out of the ten superintendents that were on there, four of them were at thirty-three percent, and the others were at thirty-one percent. So just understand, this isn't an anomaly, and I'm not asking it, and I'm not advocating for it. I'm presenting facts to you. You know, anything that happens tax-wise affects me as well. I moved here, I'm all in here, I will be affected by this as much as, well, not as much as anybody, but it will affect me. So I have skin in this game as well. I'm merely giving you information. So if you look at our budget, our published budget that we put in the paper, our general fund was that three-million-two-thirty-five-seven-sixty-six. Our LOB revenue that's on the next line down, if you divide nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty by three-point-two blah blah, you come up with thirty percent. Now, what I did for next year's scenario, because I don't have accurate numbers, I used this year's funding to create a scenario, and I need you to understand, we don't know what our state aid is going to be yet, so I needed something to go off of. So in this twenty-one-twenty-two scenario, I took this year's fund, subtracted the reduction in funding and state aid, and then I took that at thirty percent. And that's where we see a reduction in LOB of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
And when the general fund goes down, the LOB goes down?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. If general fund goes down, LOB goes down. That's how I got that compilation of three, general, the possible at-risk, and the possible reduction in LOB. So if we went to thirty-three percent, and understand, and I need to make this very, very clear, that extra three is a percentage, not a mill. Okay? And we'll look at that in just a second here. So if I took the same reduced state aid that I had on this slide, three-one-six-eight-two-six, I took that at thirty-three percent, that increases our revenue from the nine forty-nine to one-point-oh-four. That difference of ninety-four thousand dollars. Now, I would also like to clarify, so everybody understands this, the LOB authority is a ceiling, not a requirement. So what this does is it authorizes to go to thirty-three percent, but it does not mandate it to go to thirty-three percent. And that's very important to know. Right now, at thirty percent, that is the ceiling that we can get to, or the lid, if you will. What this does is raise the lid a little bit. So as we go through, let's look what this looks like. In order to go from thirty percent to thirty-three percent, that would generate ninety-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen more dollars. If you divide that by the amount of revenue of one mill, then it would take two-point-two-three mills to go to thirty-three percent. So let me back up here, because I'm going to show you something. When we look at mill levy history, we're currently at forty-seven, that would increase the mill levy to forty-nine point one-two. Historically, that's not a shock, historically. It affects people. It affects some people more than others. I had a conversation with David Mr. Bell about this. The tax burden is borne on the back of agriculture here. That's not fair. We need a bigger tax base in our community to share things like that. People have been paying taxes to support schools since the beginning of schools were taxed, since they were taxed. People without kids are paying taxes for school. My parents, at eighty-seven years old, are still paying taxes for school. Taxes for schools are a pay-it-forward mentality. Somebody paid it for me, I'll pay it for somebody else. And that somebody else will pay it for the next generation. That's just kind of a philosophical sideline there. So, to put it into real perspective, I just used a hundred-thousand-dollar home in Lincoln, Kansas, to understand what this impact would be. So I talked to Rhonda Wright, and found out all the different valuations. Residential properties are at eleven-and-a-half percent valuation. Eleven-and-a-half percent of appraised value is the tax valuation. An empty lot in this community is twelve percent. Agriculture is thirty percent of used production. So that's where your head will start spinning. It's very complex, and I don't understand it. But at least I get it enough to be able to give you this example. So if my house appraised at a hundred thousand dollars, the county would take that times eleven-and-a-half percent, and my tax valuation would be eleven thousand dollars. So, moving that mill over three places, that decimal point, every mill of taxation to me is eleven dollars and fifty cents. So if this LOB authority was raised, and it increased mills by two mills, that would cost me twenty-three dollars a year, a dollar ninety-two a month. I'm an educator, I wouldn't blink. But I have to be very sensitive and let you understand that there are people out there that it's not going to be twenty-three dollars a year. It's going to be impactful, and it's emotional, and nobody likes it. But as I said before, my job is to give you the truth, whatever that may be. And that's why I'm sharing this information with you.
Could you show us some numbers on, let's say, just a million dollars' worth of tagged land?
Well, that's where it gets really confusing, because I don't know the use valuation of that. River-bottomed ground, they're going to value at a much higher rate. I've got a hundred-and-twenty acres in Lynn Valley, you can barely go grass on it, it's so rocky. So it's appraised at peanuts, because it is useless, it's hunting land, that's all it's good for. So I can't without having a specific valuation of what that particular piece is. What I can tell people is, I'm going to try to explain this, I am not the county appraiser. Understand, no need. If you look at your tax statement, you will see tax evaluation. Whatever that number is, if you move that decimal point three places over, that will be your per-mill dollar. So if, again, on my house, if my appraised value is eleven thousand five hundred dollars, then my mill levy is eleven dollars and fifty cents. So it can be calculated, but my understanding is, a farmer might have five different, ten different, I don't know how many different tax statements, because the land valuation is so different.
And then you take that times, didn't we figure out it's a hundred-and-fifty-three mills for Lincoln County? Is that what that total was?
So if you figure out your per, your mill, take it times that, and it should come up to that, or take your total tax and divide by a hundred-and-fifty-three, and that should backfigure every mill, and then take it times two-point-three, and it should tell us the green.
I was just wanting the community to be aware of how this affects landlords in the rest of the county. If you have a good presentation here, I was just wondering if you could throw some examples up of, so the rest of the community can see.
I can't pull them out of my head, I'm sorry. Yeah. It would be easy to take anybody's property tax statement, cut the name off, and do some calculations on prime land, like my land, I call it worthless land, things like that. But I want everybody to understand, and I want the board to hear me clear, and I want the community to hear me clear. I'm not asking that we go out and raise taxes. I'm showing the board options from which to operate from. But I will say this, I think you need to strongly consider, there's a process that goes along with this, and if this process doesn't take place by July one, then it is not an option until the following year. And I will reiterate this, it does not...
You have to decide by July one?
Well, there's a process that has to be done by July one. Or it can't be done this year. I would say this, raising this lid does not require this to be done. It's kind of like having an ace up your sleeve. Do you need to pull your ace out? We don't know until the legislature figures everything out. And I apologize, this is a, I don't want to say crisis response, but seeing the amount of funding that we're going to lose, this is a decision that needs to be made, so that a resolution can be passed, so it can be published in the newspaper. This is a big deal, and it needs to be carefully thought out. But I just wanted to share that with you. That's the end of my presentation. I will try to answer any questions that you have. I may need to take notes and talk to the county. I am not the expert in this, but I have gotten an education this week.
So you're suggesting, not suggesting, but giving us information, so we have a backup plan if we get to our next budget year, and everything happens at the state level that there's a concern about, and we need the money, this would be our, this is what we can pull up, pull out of our back pocket to keep running things.
But you're saying we can only do this if we pass and publish our resolution, giving us the authority to do so first?
Yes.
And it's all done before July one? So we would have to pass and publish the resolution, giving us the authority to do so, and then decide if...
That there's a forty-day waiting period. And again, I don't know if, you know, does it give us an ace in the hole? Yes, it does. I cannot tell you how concerning it is to me to be here for ten months, to not be as ingrained into the community as every one of you are, and to have to present things like this. This is not a pleasant part of this job. And as we continue to inherit or experience issue after issue after issue, it is tremendously burdensome to me to take within this first year of this job and have to address these issues. This is not lightly taken. And I would commit a promise to you, that as we build a budget, we will be as conservative as we can be, because we must live within our means. And that is a task that I take on wholeheartedly, whatever comes with it.
We all appreciate you and the fact that you have taken the look that you have at things that maybe should have been looked at before and weren't. Unfortunately, on your watch, it's all, the dominoes are all really falling, the House of Cards is really crashing down, but you're doing an amazing job of keeping everybody informed, you're researching, you're doing your due diligence, and we all really appreciate that, and I think the community appreciates that.
The school is the community.
On your mill levy history, just for some clarification, because numbers don't lie, and there should be ways to see this correctly. Let me get all my ducks in a row. Okay, on your second, your first slide, your capital... No, yes. Okay, you don't necessarily have a slide that shows how our funding has reduced over the last few years, right, due to our kid count? Does that make sense? Because...
No, I don't have a specific, what I just showed is end-of-year kind of stuff.
Okay. So like, back to the mill levy history, in fifteen, fifty mills, it took fifty mills to generate thirty percent of what our state aid was, right?
Yes.
And then that changed in sixteen, because our valuation went up, so each mill was more, or else our kid count went down, and so our state was less. So this fluctuates as we go.
Yeah. And valuation, and here's what's really interesting, we don't get some state aid, because in the state's eyes, Lincoln County is a very wealthy district, because... We don't get some state aid, because in the state's eyes, Lincoln County is a very wealthy district because of our valuation. It has gone up year after year after year, which is an interesting concept. Because when we have now fifty-nine percent pre and reduced lunches, that is a socioeconomic indicator of poverty. But because we're agriculturally rich, we look like a wealthy county, and that affects some funding that we cannot get.
Because if ag land has increased, then that creates the increasing valuation.
Yeah, total valuation.
So, on to your question, and I went through tax papers with him a little bit. And on an eighty, I have an eighty a ground that is strictly farm ground. It's upland, but it's farm ground. A mill on there is seven dollars and ninety-two cents. So, that is just eighty acres of farm, one waterway. And then where my house sits, my house and a quarter there, which is broken and pasture, it's kind of a mixture. So, to me, that's, for most of us farmers, that's probably more where we're at, because we're gonna have buildings, we're gonna have whatever. But that's thirteen eighty-three per mill. So, somewhat more than the eleven fifty that you would have as a Lincoln resident with a hundred thousand dollar house. But that does include, you know, if you took out the house, so you take the eleven dollars, then you're actually less than the eighty a ground. I didn't do the other one that I had. But anyways, those are some numbers, if that helps you out. There is a, that's why it's so hard to figure out, because it's just...
You have to look at the actual...
There's lots of reasons.
Yes, yes, each person has to look at that. And it's like Scott said, it's gonna affect you and me, but there's also five landlords that I know that own land and live out of county, so they're paying it too. And for better or for worse. Yes, yes. And there's less of us, so...
Yeah, because it won't affect me near as much as it's gonna affect you.
Yeah.
And that's where it's a disparity process. Now, if we had, you know, a distribution center from Amazon and a industry, a manufacturing plant, and everything else, things would even out.
These schools that are at, you said your superintendents, you have four out of ten that are at thirty-three, and a few more that are at thirty-one? I'm assuming the ones that are at thirty-one have already leveled the thirty-three, have raised their cap clear to thirty-three, but they're only going to thirty-one to make it work.
And as the state finances go, you take the average, and I have to tell you, I don't know what the average was last year. Currently, the average LOB statewide will be thirty-one percent next year, and that doesn't take authority to do that. We can go thirty-one, because it's an acceptable statewide average. If you wanna go above the statewide average, and the statewide average was thirty, when the statewide average goes to thirty-one, everyone's at thirty-one. But to go above that takes a resolution and board authority.
One percent gets us nine, nine thousand, no? Three thousand dollars, right? I guess I'm just curious. You're... Thirty thousand? Yes, if we went to thirty-one, it would gain us the thirty thousand.
Right, right. Sixty, we went to thirty-two, and ninety, we went to thirty-three.
We could move to thirty-one, because it's statewide average, but we are not currently there?
No.
Currently, currently.
All these numbers are based on last year's budget of thirty. So, mul this over, run your numbers, let's have conversations.
So, when does this decision need to be done by? Do you have that somewhere? I just missed it.
You can't be able to, that April meeting, so you have to pass it, publish it, and then do our budget.
And I know, you know, it was three or four years ago that the state come out at the end of June, was it? June or whatever, and said, "You owe us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars." So, we had to write that check back to them, and the next year, it was like seventy-five thousand dollars. Boom, boom. Two years, we're down to a hundred thousand dollars. And if you don't have the money to pay it, they'll be glad to give you a loan to repay that. So, I mean, so, my point is, is like, those funds are good now, but if the state happens to come back, yeah, they're gonna take a hit and go fast. So, they don't say, "No, we'll work with you," I mean, it's, yeah, we've got to send it back.
And what was it?
And that was, that hurt.
Yeah, was that just an audit that we should've caught, or was that...
No, 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 no.
They did that across the board, yeah. They cut funding. We just get X number of dollars, and then at the end of the school year, they're gonna return that sort of amount, and say, "Pay it back."
We paid you, so, yeah, pay it back.
We are totally at their mercy.
Yeah.
Totally at their mercy.
I just wanna make that statement too, so people see this, and then they can, you know, it's pushy. I mean, there's always, there's always that too. So, and if they did that right now, we would be toast. I'm gonna have to put it up on the toast.
Do we, you had this, the staffing page. Do we know our numbers for next year possibly?
I do.
Okay. Do they compare to some of this, or is that something I can get, it's just...
I would say that Mrs. Schmidt and I are working diligently to address that.
A landmark call, you know, we need to source the money, but we also wanna be respectful of our community members as well. For the backbone, so... I'm saying, where'd you, you know, it wouldn't cost me as much as...
Right. Well, that's what I was saying. If it's not gonna cost me, what it's gonna cost John and David?
Right, yeah.
You know, it's easy for me to look and say, "Okay, that's not that bad." But for them, it's a whole, it's a whole vulnerability.
And again, that's why I showed you the two options. I work for you. You tell us how to proceed, you tell me philosophically how this, you want this district to be, and then I'll take care of it.
I also like the fact that you can raise it, but not have to use it.
Yes.
I like that will be made, but...
But using the statewide average, it's thirty-one.
It will be for next year.
For next year. And we're at thirty now.
Yes. And it could be a blended thing. I know, it's not a one or the other. It can be a little of both, it can be a gill of both. Which, as we budget, like I said, once we figure out what our real numbers are for next year, we can make better decisions. This just is a tiny shift.
Well, I can look at one percent and be more than three, a few more, okay, than three percent.
Right. Thirty-one, what would be so important in some of the taxpayers? And then we also can look at the numbers on our classroom size, the matrician.
A blended model.
Yeah, maybe some of both, that's what I mean, I mean, yeah.
Just, like you said, there's too many stupid variables in all of that, so...
Yes. It is a life of uncertainty.
And on record, with the price of everything going up, I think you have done very well with the bus contract, and I think we made the right move at the right time for that. So, as far as knowing, so...
Maybe you should've done five years, just three years.
Well, we have a two-year option, so... Worst-case scenario.
It's hard, because it's not the option they must want. But maybe the only option is...
But it's a known, with everything going up, as fast as it's going up, it's a locked-in note right now.
Yeah. You said you guys are getting our numbers together for class size. So, we might have a little bit more to look at during the April meeting.
Find a part of it in and out.
TJ, did you have anything that you wanna say?
No, they are pretty difficult to look into in detail as far as optional opportunities that we have moving forward. And in the past two weeks, we definitely tried to live within our means, and I'm sensitive. And as Pat was mentioning, the paybacks that we had to do in the past, we've accounted that money for our district mistakes, I just take it back, we have to pay back. It's a huge hit to us. Plus, that we have aging buildings and other things that became urgent, like putting on grass fires. Things that we don't have, we didn't do freezers. We had a lot of things that came up in the last few years. But we have always in the past tried to budget with our superintendents, and we are within our means of the budget. But it's just things that happen, and I'm glad to hear it, and I'm gonna look forward and see how we can build up a cushion in, of course, finances for our capital outlay and some of the other funds for a bright future for our kids.
Thank you, TJ. Anybody else have anything? John?
I can ask that question later.
Any other discussion? We need to have now, we'll bring back to the April twelve, you said, we're meeting, so we can have some more discussion then. So, pull it over. Do some checking, so...
That's why I wanted you to have your copies, so you don't forget something.
I'm just gonna start making lots of cookies. Okay. The other one was board information request, do we have anything? I need a motion for adjournment. I'm hoping you're... Thank you, Deb.
Awesome.
Thank you, Bree. Motion, my Deb, and then my Bree, does the meeting be adjourned? Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.